Booker in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father Lord God, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for life. We thank you for liberty. We thank you for the freedom we have to assemble and to discuss the affairs of our community. Be with us tonight. Give us wisdom and discernment as we address the issues before us. Lord, as always, keep our first responders and those that protect us in your care each and every day. And Lord, we just thank you for all your many blessings, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Before we get into the official business, you all may have noticed a new face sitting up here this evening. Our hard-working county attorney has taken some time with his family for vacation, so we're blessed to have his senior assistant, Will Worley. Will, good to see you up here tonight. And thank you for not wanting to go into executive session before we even get there. Okay. Public comment period. We have two citizens signed up. First one is Sandra Dean. If you'll step up to the podium and state your name for the record.
Sandy Dean, I have a few questions and remarks concerning how the German Village and St. Simon's Land Trust case has been handled. First, Commissioner Murphy quoted ordinance 1009 that any officer, department, border bureau of Glenn County affected by any decision of the Board of Appeals may take an appeal to the Board of Commissioners. Just how was Ms. Thompson affected by the ruling of the zoning board? Commissioner Murphy also brought up that he offered the abandonment of Village Drive and said that German Village residents said no at that meeting. That meeting he referred to was on May 2nd, 2017. However, staff notes and emails show the purpose of that meeting was to discuss the required plan review process of the park. Residents were then told it would have to go to the Planning Commission based on the work the St. Simon's Land Trust was planning. So why would the neighborhood need to abandon the street at that point if the park was going to be reviewed in a fair public process? But it's strange that Commissioner Murphy would bring up abandonment when in an email between David Pope, the St. Simon's Land Trust Executive Director, and Commissioner Murphy on August 21st, 2017, three months after the county's meeting with German Village, Mr. Pope says, "We heard through the grapevine that the residents of German Village are considering a petition for the county to abandon Village Drive as a public road. The first line of review is the county engineer who can stop it dead if he finds the requirement is not met. As I understand the procedure, it goes to the commission only if it passes muster with the county engineer. Do you have any suggestions as to how to handle this situation?" Why is Mr. Pope asking the county commissioner, Commissioner Murphy, how to handle this situation? Commissioner Murphy did not recuse himself because he felt there was no conflict or ethnic violations. His reason was this was because he and his wife give to the St. Simon's Land Trust, not take from it while I'm on the board of elections. So how would it look if I attended functions and openly endorsed and financially supported someone running against any one of you sitting up there? I'd only be giving, not taking. There was much talk at the public hearing as to what kind of road Village Drive is, and none of the staff could give a clear answer. But according to your own county engineer in an email dated June 14th, 2017, once again, he's responding to the St. Simon's Land Trust Executive Director, David Pope, that based on the definitions, Village Drive is currently a minor street. Why did planning staff try to convince you that it was collected? Some of our commissioners and staff have done everything and anything to help the St. Simon's Land Trust not follow the county ordinances. A blatant example of this is our community development correspondence between planning manager, Mrs. Leaf, and the civil engineer for the land trust in November 2018. Mrs. Leaf told you that at a hearing, at the hearing, that the structure had been presented as a storage shed when it was first submitted in September 2018. Looking at the Glenn County Community Development Review history for CP 3800 dated October 16th, 2018, it states, "Entrance Arbor/Cazebo is a new structure and site plan approval by the Island Planning Commission would be required." In an email dated November 8th, 2018, Mrs. Leaf states, "If your client is still interested in having a small structure, a storage hut, that is less than 200 square feet, would not need a building permit from the county. If they perhaps have a locked area with the structure to store trail maps or brochures, sign-in books, logs, or other storage related to their needs at the preserve, the structure would qualify as a storage building and not require a building permit." Shortly after that email from staff, the St. Simon's Land Trust sent the same drawing of the Entrance Arbor/Cazebo that was on the original plan but added two storage doors. Yes, Village Drive might be a public street, but why did the land trust and county staff and a few commissioners do everything they could to make sure they did not need a building permit? Could it be that with a building permit, this project would have to go before the Island Planning Commission for a thorough and public review? Maybe, as David Pope would say, it would not pass muster with the IPC. You gave staff all the time they needed for the appeals but would not allow the zoning board to speak on why they made their decision. Let me remind you that the St. Simon's Land Trust did not file the appeal, but when Mr. Slate and Ms. Shipman spoke, neither one of them talked about anything to do with this appeal. But how wonderful St. Simon's Land Trust was. Why would the chairman allow this?
Ms. Dean, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Smith, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simon's Island. I'm here to speak to you about the agenda item, consent agenda item 27, having to do with the roundabout at the intersection of East Beach Causeway and Ocean Boulevard. Before I get to that, let me explain for the new members of the board why I wear this cumbersome outfit. That's because I want to hear you. The reason I need this is the last time I could hear clearly without help was in the summer of 1955 at the Nevada Proving Grounds when I dropped my earplugs in the dark shortly before the test of a tactical nuclear weapon. And there was a flash, and a few seconds later, a loud noise, and then I didn't hear anything for a long time. So I wear this because I want to hear you and to hear people who speak, like Ms. Dean, who did a very good job addressing something you don't really want to hear about, the mistakes made by your planning staff and your director of community development who made a ridiculous appeal. But moving on, I have been driving through the intersection of East Beach Causeway and Ocean Boulevard for 27 years. I've never seen a problem, a traffic problem. If the purpose of this roundabout is to increase, I'm sorry, to decrease the delay of people trying to get to the beach, to relax on the beach and sit on the beach, and we want them to get there as quickly as possible, so what? I hope that isn't the reason. Maybe it's safety. I don't see the roundabout, the new roundabout at the intersection of Demery and Frederica as making that intersection any safer than it was in 1992 when I first drove through it. So since you're not going to speak to me, let me take this off, so I won't get that feedback. Starting in 2015, when you first, four of you, I'm sorry, yes, four of you who are sitting there tonight, first started talking about SPOS 2016, it was clear that a number of you were not interested in the three or maybe four roundabouts that Dale Provenzano was pitching. And by the time the SPOS wish list went on, was approved by you after some poorly attended public hearings, there was no reference to roundabouts. There were intersection improvements. You have not really improved any intersections since the passage of SPOS 2016, with the possible exception of a little safety island at the intersection of Sea Island Road and Frederica. I'm going to ask you to please, one of you, pull consent agenda item 27 and discuss among yourselves and with your director of public works, why you need a roundabout, what information you have given to the neighbors in East Beach who are going to be affected for untold weeks or months. And I don't know that you know how long this process is going to go on, that people are going to have to take a detour to get to and from their homes. So I don't think there has been any really adequate public discussion of this. It has come up only very briefly at one or maybe two of Commissioner Murphy's so-called town hall meetings, but if anyone asked a question about the roundabouts, there was lots of talk by members of staff and elected officials about what was going to happen, but not much detail. So please pull this and let the public hear you discuss how you make your decision on this matter. And I'll put this back on so I can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I sure hate to hear about you here. And okay, we're going to move on to public hearing, land use. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position and time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item one, CUP 4005 Pet Doctor. Consider a request for a conditional use permit to operate a veterinarian hospital, excuse me, office at 110 Anderson Way, Brunswick, Georgia, 31520. The site is a 1,500-square-foot unit in the condo building in a zone highway commercial. And an animal hospital is a conditional use in this zoning parcel ID 03-21915. Nicola Overman, applicant and owner. Steffi?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. So this is CUP 4005, the Pet Doctor, and this address is 110 Anderson Way. And this application is before you because a veterinary clinic, a veterinary office, is a conditional use permit in the highway commercial zoning district. So the applicant is requesting the conditional use permit. The applicant has been operating as a veterinarian in this community for many years. They have been operating with a valid occupational license as the business pet doctor since August of 2001. The pet doctor previously was located in a home-based business in the Forest Agricultural Zone on Pennick Road. And in the Forest Agricultural Zone, animal clinics are in allowed use, so they did not have to get a special permit to operate except for the occupational permit. So just recently, they decided to move to this new highway commercial zoning district and outside of the home-based business. And when they applied for their change of address with the occupational tax office, the planning and zoning department does a review and realized that this is a use that does need a conditional use permit. So the applicants did apply for that, and we have noticed it for this meeting as well as the Mail and Planning Commission. Just a few things about this property. It is a three-unit condominium building. There are other, there's other commercial businesses within the complex. They do operate out of an N unit of this condo building. They are served by a community septic system. And due to the size of the septic system, the environmental health department has added some conditions to their business operation. So they are not permitted to board or groom animals. Animal waste, animal hair, and chemicals cannot be discharged into the system. And the office can only operate for a maximum of three days per week, and they cannot operate during nighttime or weekend hours. And according to the applicant, they have stated that that meets their operational hours anyway. They do do home visits a couple days a week. And then, so they're really only at this place of business a few days a week. And so there is a letter that was included in your packet from environmental health that details the conditions. So the future land use map is one of the elements we look at with any kind of change of zoning or zoning decision. So this property is actually medium, medium-density residential according to the future land use map. So as we mentioned, it is zoned highway commercial, but the future land use map, if you can see where this arrow is pointing, the commercial would be on Highway 341 at the corner of Anderson Way and Highway 341. But then, as you start to get further back, you know, this is located in an area that was called out as a medium-density residential because it does transition to residential. However, this site has been zoned highway commercial since 1974, and there's been commercial operations on this property for many, many years now. And as you've probably noted before when this comes up, our land use map, for future land use map, is not parcel-by-parcel based. It's a general area. So neighborhood compatibility, the lots on Anderson Way are zoned for commercial office uses. However, it does start to transition to residential zoning, R9 zoning district, both adjacent to this location and further back behind the building. They do have a wooden fence as well as a line of mature trees that do buffer the commercial business from the surrounding residential. And then Anderson Way does provide an access point to New Jessup Highway for both the Anderson Estate and Ellis Point neighborhoods towards the west. So here's just an aerial overview of the property. This is New Jessup Highway 341. This is Anderson Way coming in. This is all commercial activity along here, and they are located in this N unit. And this property, as well as the properties across the street, are zoned R9. This just shows the surrounding zoning. This is highway commercial along here. And this is the unit that they operate out of, and this is where the parking is located. And the planning commission held a duly notice public hearing on June 4th of 2019, and they did vote unanimously, there was one member absent, so it was a 6-0 vote, to recommend approval of CUP 4005 to the Board of Commissioners. And your possible actions are to approve this conditional use permit, approve it with modifications or conditions. You could defer it back to the MPC, I'm sorry, defer action to another meeting, or remand the proposal back to the MPC, or deny the conditional use. And our recommended motion is to approve the application as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions for Steffi? Okay, Steffi, thank you. Don't get too lost. This is a public hearing, and we're going to open up the floor to a public hearing. All those who are in favor of this special use, step up to the podium and... All those that are in favor, okay? Seeing none, hearing none. All those opposed to the approval of the special use, step up to the podium. All those opposed, okay? Seeing none, hearing none. Commissioners, what do you want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application CUP 4005 as presented.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioners, I call the motion. All those in favor, signal five, or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Public hearing, establishment of fees, item two. Consider authorizing the sale of up to eight benches on the fishing pier at Gascoigne Bluff Park and... Park and approve the Gascoigne Bluff Park Memorial Plaque and Bench Policy, with the funding to be provided by the citizens requesting the benches and increase revenue and expenditures in the FY 20 Recreation and Parks Department's operating budget in the amount of $16,000. Lisa?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Lisa Gerganis, Recreation and Parks Manager. The item we're bringing before you tonight is a consideration of implementing a memorial bench and plaque program at Gascoigne Bluff Park. The proposed policy, the objective of this and the intent, is to provide the public with an opportunity to memorialize a deceased individual by purchasing a bench and a plaque that would be placed on the fishing pier at Gascoigne Bluff Park. The policy would be very similar to the program that exists at Neptune Park that's been very popular in the community. And we would follow the guidelines of the newly adopted naming policy that the Commission approved several, two months ago. So, the presentation tonight, the benches that we would propose to purchase for the pier would be very durable and long-lasting, but they would be a little different than the ones that are at Neptune Park. They would be cedar recycled plastic slats and black powder coated with aluminum, six foot in length, which is the pretty standard. And then, the plaques would be just like the ones that we use at Neptune Park, which would be three by eight inches with bronze, and would be etched with the, the information that the person requesting and wanting to purchase the bench would, would purchase. The next slide shows the proposed locations of the benches on the pier. There are, we've identified eight spots on the pier that we feel would be a good location. The fishing pier does get a lot of use from, from local fishermen, and those folks are typically bringing chairs to the pier. So, we feel like implementing this program would be beneficial to those folks that, because they could then fish off the pier and not have to bring chairs and things with them. Four of the benches would be outside of the covered area, and four would be under the covered area. And they would all face towards the water. The fees for the, for the program that we're proposing would be approximately $2,000 is the cost that a person would pay to the county to purchase the, the bench and have the program. That includes the cost of the bench, the labor for the assembly and installation, and then the plaque and mounting of the bench. The cost estimate for the bench is, is a rough estimate because that, that could go down, that's on the higher end, but it does include shipping, and we can only guarantee a cost of a bench for about 30 days. So, that's the estimated cost. And then, once the hard cost came in after the bench was installed, we would then work with the purchaser to either collect additional funds if needed, or give them a partial refund if the cost was less than that. So, this cost is a little less than the program that's at Neptune Park, mainly because the benches would not have to be, they would be installed on the concrete pier, but at Neptune Park, the concrete path, pathways and the pavers have to be installed. So, that's why the cost is a little less than the one at Neptune, because the cost here, we already have this built in on the pier. So, what we're asking you tonight to consider is to authorize the sale of up to eight benches and the fishing pier at Gascoigne Bluff and approve, approve the policy and the program that goes along with that, and, and a budget adjustment, you know, based on the possibility of some folks purchasing these. And I actually was contacted yesterday by a mother who saw the article in the newspaper and mentioned that she'd be very interested in this if the board does decide to pass this program. So, I think it would be very popular at the park, and so, we're just asking for your consideration to implement this. And so, the final slide is a recommended motion if you choose to move forward with that. So, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, have any questions for Lisa? Okay. We're going to move to the public hearing. All those in favor, want to speak in favor of this, please step up to the podium and say your name for the record.
I'm Julian Smith again. I'm hoping that the three of you who serve with Commissioner Sublick, that is Commissioners Booker, Browning, and Coleman, might encourage other former Commissioners to join with you, former Commissioners who served with Mr. Sublick, to have a bench in his memory, given his death at the, near the pier. So, that's all I have to say. But I think it's, it's a good idea to have memorial benches, and I hope you'll find other places where it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else want to speak in favor of benches? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed want to speak? Okay, seeing none, hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the sale of up to eight benches on the fishing pier at Gascoigne Bluff and approve Gascoigne Bluff Park Memorial Plaque and Bench Policy, with funding to be provided by the citizens requesting the benches and increase revenue and expenditures in the FY 2020 Recreation and Parks Department operating budget in the amount of $16,000.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, there being none, I call the question. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, move that we approve Consent Agenda Finance Committee, Personnel Committee, and General Business, with the exception of any item that a Commissioner was just to pull for discussion.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, that was for all three of the agenda items?
General Business, Finance, and Personnel, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item 27, please.
Pardon me?
I'd like to pull Item 27.
Okay, we're going to pull Item 27. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, with the exception of pulling Item 27. Any further discussion?
I'd like to pull, is Item 36 being under the consent? Do we need to pull that if I want to talk about it?
No, that's not.
It's just general business. Okay, I'll be sure.
That's, that's general business. Okay, so, we're going to pull Item 27. Got a motion and a second for all other items. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Commissioner Coleman, Item 27. Item 27. Award a contract for the SPOLOST 2016 Ocean Boulevard and East Beach Causeway Intersection Improvement Project to curb and gutter professionals incorporated, Jessup, Georgia, in the amount of $1,00,012,740, with funding to be provided by SPOLOST 2016 Intersection Improvements. Mr. Austin?
Okay, you just waiting for me to ask you questions?
Well, I, I can brief, or you can ask a question, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we just let Mr. Coleman, you know, set the stage here?
Sure. Okay. Now, we've got this on here, for the average person that would read this agenda item, we've got this on here as intersection improvement. Then, we have it in your written report that it is indeed going to be a roundabout. I remember when we were putting these items on the SPOLOST 2016 and the conversations and all that we had about the various areas for roundabouts. I know this was one of them. I know they had another, another one down at the Demery and Causeway intersection. That was a part of the conversation. I don't recall us ever, did we, did I see this?
Yes, sir. We, we talked about it at a work session. We had a couple of things. The Pond people came in and briefed you guys at a work session on these improvements. We also had this at a work session where I, I needed guidance from you on these two roundabouts and, and the, what we were going to do. Actually, I needed guidance to proceed on design for these two. And, and then, I briefed you at that time that we were going to do two designs at, at Federica and Kingsway. And I would come back to you, and we would discuss the Kingsway and Federica intersection, what we would do there. So, before we went to design, we asked for guidance from the board. And you gave us guidance to go out and, and design this, and we spent the design money and designed a roundabout there and a design of a roundabout at Demery and East Beach.
Do you have that? Can you project that?
Commissioner Coleman, I hate to interrupt, but while he was giving that background, I'd like to also add that Commissioner Murphy held some, what, at least a couple of Town Hall meetings. So, you know, he reached out to the community to see what they wanted to do, and with that feedback, and with what Dave has done, is really how we got here. But it's been discussed quite a bit.
Did we do all the necessary, you know, traffic? I mean, where did we come up with the idea that we need improvement there?
Well, the, the Community Developments Director, David Hanley, a, through the BATS Committee, there was a study, a traffic study done on the south part of the island called the Pond Study.
Right.
Okay? Which some folks think was not done well, but my traffic engineer believes it was done extraordinarily well. And the traffic engineers at Pond are very accomplished-type folks, okay? There was some confusion, I think, out in the, in the webosphere, if you will, because Dave Hanley put the 2015 study, the draft study, and you know, when you do a study, typically, they'll hand in a 90, 95% study at a draft and wait for the last comments. And I think Dave Hanley either never put the last comments in, or he left at that particular time. But there was a final of that, a 2016 final Pond Study. And we had the Pond Study, I'm pretty certain those Pond guys came in and talked to you all about the intersection improvements that we had. We also had a Town Hall where the Pond guy came in, that was at the St. Williams Church, and talked to everybody about the intersections improvements. And, and so, all of that was kind of discussed. Now, some of the discrepancies in the Pond Study that, that I'm hearing, the chatter from, from citizens, is that the traffic, the traffic counts were taken at the wrong time of the year, or the traffic counts assumed a wrong assumption of growth. Ben Pierce, our traffic engineer, and we're very lucky to have a traffic engineer on staff, reviewed that. And you can argue that, and you can say, okay, well, if it was taken at a different time of year, instead of 1,000 cars going through that intersection, would have been 1,200, okay, or 1,500. But the, 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 the common problem is still, there is a problem in that intersection, and that you could improve the, the functioning of that intersection. Now, a lot of folks would say, well, why are you doing one out there? One out there, I have to, I have to go back a few, a few years before I even knew where that intersection was, I was at a meeting, a newcomers' meeting on the island. And this lady comes up to me, and she says, you need to put a, you need to put a traffic signal at, at Ocean Boulevard and, and East Beach. And I thought, I wasn't even sure exactly where that was at the time. And her name happened to be, well, maybe I shouldn't tell her name, but her, she, sure, her husband, her husband was a previous DOT Commissioner, and she lived on, just south of East Beach. And it would, it, and that's exactly the clientele that benefits there, because the problem at that intersection is the northbound traffic coming out of East Beach, the increased serviceability, if you will. The enhanced serviceability that the roundabout gives you is the folks coming up Ocean Boulevard and taking a left. All the other directions, not a problem. You're coming, you're coming southbound from East Beach, not a problem. You're always going to be able to turn right. If you're blowing through either way on East Beach Causeway, not really a problem. But the roundabout is going to slow those folks down a little bit, okay? There's a lot of pedestrians there. If you know, if you've been there on a, on a Saturday or summer, summer Saturday, a lot of folks walking around, it's going to enhance the pedestrian ability, crosswalks and such. And so, it is, it is an improvement. There's lots of asphalt out there already. It is an improvement. Contrary to what my good esteemed buddy here, Putty, said, and I was in here before the roundabout was put at Demery and Federica, but I understand there was lots of mashing of teeth at that time. People didn't want it. Even heard the guy on the radio said he didn't want it, and then later said he, he agrees that it's a good addition. So, they are safer. They are safer. They, they, you get better serviceability with less asphalt on the road, which I would think we would want on the island. And the cars are not out there idling, that kind of stuff, if there's a signal, okay? So, I remember former Commissioner Strickland was very opposed to roundabouts. And then, we had the DOT traffic guy, safety guy, come in and give you, the Commissioners, a pitch on the roundabout that's proposed. I think it's going in at 99 and 17. And after that, after that briefing, he was, he was convinced that a roundabout was the thing to do. So, it's kind of a, you know, we hate change, we don't want to change anything, but it is a wave of the future there, seem to all be putting them in. And we think it's, I mean, we've designed it based on the guidance that the board has given us.
What, it says in here that it's a single-lane roundabout?
Yes, sir. Well, similar to the, similar to the single-lane roundabout we have at Federica and Lawrence Road. It's a single lane, but there's a mountable curb on the inside. So, if there's a truck with a long wheelbase or a tractor-trailer, they're going to be able to, they'll have the turning radius.
I just, I'm, I'm trying to picture a single-lane roundabout right there. I mean, and then, I'm trying to take the picture you just gave me at the Lawrence Road and Federica and put that. It, it just, my mind tells me there's a heck of a lot more traffic in all that would be going through. I mean, I don't see where the comparison would be if you put a single lane there. I don't see how you could, the comparison of the, the different type of traffic, I guess you would say. You've got people coming off the beach, you've got people coming out of a subdivision, immediately coming out of a subdivision, going into a short causeway going one way and a, and a small road going in toward the village area. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to grasp what, what, what is that going to improve there? I don't understand how you're going to get a single-lane...
It just helps them zipper in, you know, line in. So, if that, if that vehicle is screaming, you know, that vehicle is traveling east on East Beach Causeway, and you're on Ocean Boulevard, and you want to go left, okay? That guy's got to pull, got to go around the roundabout. That's going to give you time to go around, and you're going to scissor in, and those cars are going to move like they moving a roundabout. So, it, instead of that guy, instead of you stop there and having to wait for him, you're going to be able to go because he's going to, he's going to have to go around the roundabout. And so, that northbound ocean traffic, northbound Ocean Boulevard traffic will be able to make left turns onto East Beach Causeway better than they can now. And then, that's about all you're going to improve there, as far as traffic.
So, well, that's what I was saying. I mean, we haven't had any bad accidents there, we hadn't had any pedestrians involved in accidents, and I just, when you say improvement, I would think you took that all in consideration. I mean, did, did we do traffic studies? Do the counts, I mean, you said they did.
Yes, but there were traffic counts, and they're in the study, and there was a traffic study, and that's all that was done. I couldn't tell you if, if there were accidents there, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I mean, I just don't recall any. Usually, the chief gives us, you know, any type of an accident, whether it be pedestrian automobile, especially on St. Simons, we, we get text on those, and I don't recall any being in that area right there. I mean, I can understand a little congestion, but, you know, I'm, I'm just, you know, when you first read this thing right here, it, it leads you to believe they're going to put in some carbon based on the name of the company that's doing it. And then, when you get down to your report, then is when you spill the beans about it being a single-lane roundabout. I just... I just, I don't see where a million dollars' worth of roundabout right there is going to make that big a difference, quite frankly. And I will tell you, I do remember us sending you back to the design stages on this thing. But I will say, maybe my memory's getting old, just like everybody else's does eventually, but I just don't ever recall us, you know, putting pedal on this thing. I mean, I remember us talking about it, I remember us going to see what it was going to look like, getting a design on paper and this kind of thing. But I think that was all, since it's, since it's not a roundabout there now, you're really configuring the whole intersection all over again, quite frankly. I mean, that's what we're talking about here. You're going to take the stop signs out of the streets, I mean, it's going to be very similar to the, to the single lane at Federica and Lawrence.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Except it won't have a tree in the middle of it.
Mm-hmm.
So, there'll be, there'll be eight inches of stamped concrete in the middle of it, colored concrete.
Be like, be like a little small island, like in, at Federica and Demery, but it's just going to be one lane.
Well, there'll be no green stuff in the middle, it'll be stamped concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, we, but tonight, we don't have a design to show the public.
Absolutely have a design, because we're fixing to award for construction. Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, that's why I was asking if you had something we're going to shoot up on the...
No, sir. I know, I could have been prepared to put it up, but I don't have it with me tonight, because I've, we've shown this before, but I'd be happy to go over the plans with you, or, you know, I could have, I could have easily brought it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I mean, we've got two new commissioners sitting up here, and I don't know how deep they got into this and got the facts like they were. And, you know, I'll ask any of y'all that have any questions there, David, and...
I've seen the design and studied it, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah. David, I think it needs to be said too, about, one of the main efforts was to find a way to improve the traffic situation where it flows better. And a lot of the traffic improvements was really about how to find ways to keep traffic flowing. That's the whole idea about the roundabout. Really, in a nutshell, you know, you can keep the traffic flowing there, questions about, well, is it really necessary at this time? Do we have enough there at this time? Well, I guess you could have all kinds of opinions, whether it's necessary at this time or not, but, you know, we did set forth to make all the improvements we possibly could. And if we want to put this off and wait until it's, you know, one day when we got so much traffic there, then we say, well, you know, we probably should have put that roundabout in ten years ago, then it'll take another five years to actually get one put in, going through a process like we, you know, we're talking twenty, fifteen, when this went on the list? Yes, it's almost twenty-twenty.
Twenty-sixteen, Splosh.
Yeah, it's twenty-sixteen Splosh, so it actually went on the list, you know, proposed list in twenty-fifteen, so we're almost five years down the road. And, you know, if we want to wait and see how things look in five years, you're talking about ten years before you get one put in, to be honest with you. So, you know, I understand what Commissioner Coleman's saying, but we have an opportunity here to make an improvement before it gets out of hand there, and frankly, I'm for it. So, Commissioners?
You ready for a motion?
I just want to make another comment. Mr. Austin did a great job with the pass through street, and I, just for the record, I'm showing Commissioner Coleman the diagram that we've had, it's on my laptop, and he's had a chance to see it. But we've had multiple town halls about this, work sessions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so we've beaten this up pretty good. But one thing that I might add to your presentation is originally, it was a little bit larger diameter roundabout, and one concern that we did here at the town halls was the impact on the marsh area around it. So, you and your design team were able to bring together the engineers and make the diameter a bit smaller to mitigate any adverse impact on the marshlands immediately adjacent. And that's the requirement for now, the hard surface center of the roundabout, to allow the trucks to come up onto the inside turning radius and not need such a great diameter for the whole, for the whole roundabout. So, I, I'm here to agree with Mr. Austin, a great deal of time and effort had been put into this, try to come up with the right design.
Commissioner, also, I think initially, in the Coast Guard Master Plan, aesthetics was a consideration, that the roundabout was, certainly that's ancillary to the movement of traffic, but that was also a consideration for a roundabout there, rather than four stop signs.
Not only the aesthetics, but also the safety factor for bikers and pedestrians to, you know, by necessity, as you come up to a single lane roundabout, rather than busting down each beach's causeway to get to the stop sign there just before you enter the Coast Guard beach area. You know, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic, and if we can slow it down a block ahead of time, it really, I think, improves the safety aspect that Mr. Austin did emphasize earlier.
You want to make the motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, if we're done discussing, I'll take a motion.
I just, what you just said about the slowing the traffic down, I mean, there is a lot of pedestrians and bicycles and stuff like that going through that intersection, and you take those stop signs out, it ain't going to slow the traffic down.
There are no stop signs at East Beach Causeway and Ocean, going down East Beach Causeway towards the beach. So, you know, we could consider putting in a four-way stop sign, but as we've discussed at our design sessions, that's not what the traffic engineers prefer as the modern way to mitigate danger to pedestrians. So, that's where we are here and now, and there are, if we had the design up, we could see the pedestrian crossings and things like that, that I think will be an improvement to this design, so.
Ready for a motion?
All I know is, I've just, I've had a lot more negativity from the public than I have positive from the public about these roundabouts on St. Simons, and regardless of what your feelings may be, the fact is, you get complaints all the time from bicyclers and pedestrians, all that, from that roundabout at the airport. And I mean, it's, if you go to St. Simons, you got to drive slow, there ain't no such animal as speeding up traffic over there, and that's what a roundabout does. Mike.
Commissioners, thank you for your discussion, and I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I move to award a contract for the Splosh 2016 Ocean Boulevard and East Beach Causeway Intersection Improvement Project to Kerb and Gutter Professionals, Inc., Joseph George and the amount of a million, twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for funding to be provided by the Splosh 2016, our section improvements.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion seconded on the floor, any further discussion? Commissioners, I call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. All right, six, four, and one against. Thank you, Commissioners. Consider appointing two citizens to serve on the Glen County Board of Tax Assessors. The terms begin August seven, twenty nineteen, and end August sixth, twenty twenty-three. We have applications received from Jeffrey Bennett, who's currently serving, Louise Hilton, and Ralph Powers, who is currently serving. I'm going to ask Commissioner Murphy if he wants to lead off the nominations.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Ralph, AKA Rick Powers, to continue serving in this role. He's been in the role for many years, he's got a wealth of information about how the office runs and the processes, and so I would like to support his renomination.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jeffrey Bennett, who is currently serving, to continue to serve.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations before I close the floor?
Do we need to second any of those?
No, no.
No?
We got to vote on them individually, don't we, Will?
Yeah. Okay, I'm closing the floor to nominations. We'll take the nominations in order of how they were, individuals have ordered they were nominated. The first one was Mr. Ralph Powers. All those in favor of Mr. Ralph Powers serving, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Powers. Mr. Jeffrey Bennett, all those in favor of Mr. Jeffrey Bennett, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Jeffrey Bennett, and I thought I'd see him out there today.
We do.
He will continue to serve. Okay, general business, item thirty-six. Consider authorizing the reorganization of county departments and the reclassification of department head positions. This is Mr. Hours.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Item before you tonight has been to the Personnel Committee. Back in June, it came before the Board of Commissioners at your last meeting, and the Board directed that the item be sent back to the Personnel Committee for further discussion, which the Personnel Committee met on this past Monday to discuss this. And the recommendation in front of you tonight was passed unanimously by the Personnel Committee. And what the recreation, I mean, what the recommendation is that's before you tonight is reorganization of county departments. And in your package, there's a proposed organizational chart. In two thousand and fifteen, as directed by the Board of Commissioners, county departments were reorganized. Three departments, the Finance Department, the Human Resources Department, and Information Technology Department, were placed and reported to a Director of Administrative Services. The Director of Administrative Services also served as Chief Financial Officer. And as we know, Ms. Tanya Miller served in that role until earlier this year, around the January, February timeframe, when she resigned and accepted a position as City Manager for the city of Waycross, Georgia. Anytime that a position is vacated, we always look to see whether or not, you know, we need to continue as is with the position, or modify it in some way. The county finances are very critical. In fact, it's probably the one item that gets more attention than anything with the annual budget process, with the tax bills that are sent out each year, and several other items. So, county finances, without doubt, very important to the organization. The Director of Administrative Services, because they're going to fulfill their job responsibilities, had oversight of IT and HR, and was not fully committed to oversight of the Finance Department just from a time standpoint. I don't mean to imply that Ms. Miller wasn't committed to county finance and make sure that it operated efficiently, effectively. However, her time was split in three ways. And due to, due to the importance of finance and the fact we've had some issues in the last couple of years that weren't addressed in the finance area, that later came about and was addressed by Ms. Munson, I believe it's important to have the Chief Financial Officer sole duties to oversee the Finance Department. And therefore, a draft organizational chart was created, and like all other changes to our personnel system, this was sent to the Archer Company for review. In the early two thousands, the county adopted the Archer Classification Compensation Plan. The Classification Compensation Plan has several grades for positions. We have a hundred and fifty-one different position classifications, and each position has a job description. The job description is based on the completion of a comprehensive position questionnaire, and the consultant then takes that CPQ, as we refer to it, and looks at it and develops a job description and an appropriate grade for the position. That was done with the proposed reorganization, and since, the proposed reorganization would then have the HR Department report to the county manager, and the IT Department report to the county manager. As was done prior to two thousand and fifteen, the consultant had to look to see how that would change the realignment and change the grading system. During the process, or read, the Human Resources Manager had each of the department heads fill out a new position questionnaire that was reviewed by the consultant to just check where they were with their job duties and responsibilities. Based on that review, the consultant has recommended the changes before you tonight. And those, each position is listed before you, and this does create the Chief Financial Officer position as a standalone position, and eliminates the Director of Administrative Services. I believe that this will be more efficient and effective for the county, and that the Chief Financial Officer can totally focus on the financial responsibilities of the We originally hoped that this would, had been discussed with the Board during your budget process, but the consultant, I think there's one of them for all their clients in Georgia, and they don't move real fast. So, it took them a while, and as soon as we could get it to you was in June, the budget process was pretty much over at that point in time. We did include funds in the budget. We estimated fifty thousand dollars for the changes, and it turns out, that's about what the proposed changes are, fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. So, we did anticipate the change, the funding is included in the budget. And the reorganization is before you. I will say that each of the positions listed on here, no one came to me and said, you know, we want our department to be looked at, we want our position to be looked at, we want to, you know, to be reorganized. No one came to me and said, you know, I want a raise. The department heads did not do that at all, they really weren't involved in the process other than to fill out the position questionnaire for their particular job. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions the Board may have.
Yes, sir, I have a few questions, Mr. Hours. What kind of, first of all, let me say, I'm fully supportive of moving the CFO responsibility solely in to deal with the budget and budgeting process, and they don't need to be distracted. And I do believe that making them, elevating them and elevating their pay is important because it's a very competitive workplace out in the world out there today, and so do we have to attract good talent. I do have a little issue or a problem or concern, you said that you budgeted the fifty thousand dollars. Now, I'm new, and so, when we went through this and read the budget that you gave us, I didn't see that in here. I did see on page seventeen where it says that eight positions are being recommended for reclassification, but no new positions are being recommended. Is that, in that statement, is that what you were referring to, to, actually, it's ten today, for the reclassification? And does, was that what you were saying here on page seventeen?
No, sir, those eight reclassifications are totally separate from this.
Okay. And so, is, why wouldn't we just then roll this into the new budget cycle for approval for next year? What was your, the thought process there? I mean, am I making myself clear? I mean, why today and not go through the regular budget process with this?
Well, our original hope was that it would have, we would have received a report in time from the consultant to have met with you during the budget process for this current fiscal year, which began July first.
I guess, you know, last week, we had our last meeting, we talked a little bit, I think think we had a similar situation, come up with the, the assessor's office, tax assessor board asking for a raise and we, and we kind of said, hey, go through the budget process. This, to me, almost looks like that same kind of ask, but, but we're not doing that here. So it causes me pause. I, I don't have a problem with, with what's going on with the Chief Financial Officer. I firmly stand behind you in that regard, but to me, the way it's presented, the way it came about, I have questions about.
Well, and I understand your concerns with that. I will say that this was presented to you last fiscal year, actually before the budget was adopted. It came before the Personnel Committee in early June, but in the second meeting in June, when you adopted the budget, the Chairman of the Personnel Committee, Dr. Murphy, and myself were both out of town. And so since it was my item, I requested that it be held off until July, when I would be present at the meeting. But it, it was, I believe, in time during the current year's budget process, the way it was first originated with Personnel Committee meeting in June, and then it would have theoretically come before you at your June board meeting when you adopted the budget.
Yeah, being the Chairman of the Pension and Personnel Committee, I, I can attest to the fact that when we looked at it la, earlier this week on Monday, that was a second go-around for us. We had another robust discussion. It was exactly as Mr. Hours stated, we did, we did give our approval of this action at our June meeting and it was simply a matter of who was out of town at that time and who could have spoken to the issue. But it was agreed to by the Pension Committee, you know, prior, prior to the, the July 1st budget cycle. You know, and I, and I think at, at the end of the day, you know, I'm glad you're fully in agreement with the CFO dealing with only financial issues. Our, our budget is growing and responsibilities are, are growing and we need to have absolute precision there. And then the question also was, was discussed, and I, I raised a question at our last meeting is what, why the distinction between a manager and a director? And it really is more semantics and it seems as if when you call the, the people leading information technology and human resources, a director rather than manager, it, it adds prestige to the position and that's going to be critically important as we try to attract, you know, the highest quality future applicants. In terms of what Archer did, Archer analyzed the positions that have been asked to give pay increases. And my understanding, Mr. Hours, unless I'm mistaken, is that really we're raising the pay grade up to the 50th percentile. It's not like we're the 75th percentile for these critical people in our county government. So I, to me, you know, I, I just, I find that in a very important county in the state of Georgia to have critical positions at the 50th percentile, really, in my mind, substandard. And the last question that was, was made at the, at the Personnel, Pension and Personnel Committee was, who should these, these individuals report to, specifically human resources and, and IT? And the suggestion had been, the question had been asked, should they report to Assistant County Manager or the County Manager? We had a long discussion about that and Mr. Hours made it clear that if you look on the organizational chart, it looks like the Assistant County Manager has three direct reports, Recreation, Animal Control, and Communications. But she's also involved with, with several very critical special projects like the Beach Revetment Project, like the, the grant from, who was the grant from for the Beach Shoreline Protection Act?
Governor.
Governor. But, but that's for the revetment.
Right.
But there's another one from, DCA. So she's got projects like that coming in all the time, so I don't think we can just look at the organizational chart and say, you know, they ought to report to her. So, you know, Mr. Hours, you have a very detailed explanation with, you know, very robust discussion with Commissioners Neal and Coleman and myself and we voted unanimously to, to, to approve his recommendation. But it's, it's, we've gone over this pretty thoroughly twice, I, I do believe.
Commissioners, any more questions or discussion on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
For the committee, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize the reorganization of the county departments and the reclassification of department head positions as recommended in the report made by Mr. Hours.
Second. Commissioners, we have a motion seconded on the floor, any further discussion? I call the motion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything for executive session? Okay, very well. Thank you all for attending. This meeting is adjourned.